Okay, we're all set. Tom, it's all yours.
Okay. I'd like to call this regular town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, to order at 7:03 PM Tuesday, April 21st. The pledge. Allegiance through the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the reward for which is the one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Justice.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 14th meeting?
I move second. You want to do a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mayor Big Leona's absent. Deputy Mayor Zan Piano.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Duty.
Here.
Councilor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Goode.
Here.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
And Councilor Felicia.
Here.
Thanks.
Now can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Rose and Marie Michelle. Okay, thank you. With all in favor? I'm sorry.
All right.
All right, next item, Town Managers' Report.
Yes, I have a brief COVID-19 update and currently as of this morning, 4/21, we have 48 confirmed positive cases. It breaks down to 26 in North Branford, 22 in Northford, and two fatalities that occurred earlier in the month. That has not changed. So currently 48 total cases. And I just want to say, you know, to Mike Pascasella, Director, and East Shore Health District Team have been very, very helpful, very communicative and very responsive. They've covering a lot of ground and covering a lot of things and monitoring a lot of different situations that are unfolding here. And I just want to say that I think they're doing an outstanding job in assisting us, providing us with valuable information in a timely, timely manner. So that's it to my report thus far. Other than to say that, as always, we are still working to source PPE for our first responders and that's an ongoing effort as we speak. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Just a quick note. Bob Diglion has been, he's out of quarantine now, so hopefully he'll be back soon, which is a good... Citizen's statements and petitions and correspondence?
Yeah, I have a number of statements. I don't know if we want to handle it here or at the end of the meeting, but I have correspondents that have come in. And obviously, I started forwarding a lot of those to the council and then it was, it was pretty heavy in terms of correspondence. So I tried to forward all of those over to Michelle and also to have Gina in my office put those together. I think from the last meeting count, I believe I have almost 44 and I think Marie Diamond has an extra one. And actually, I believe another email came in as the meeting just kicked off. So it probably brings our total to 46 that I can give and hand over to Michelle and we can make part of the record. It would be rather lengthy for me to go into all of those names and comments unless the council wants me to do so.
And Michael, I would like to know what my responsibility is as far as that goes because generally speaking, I'm accountable for what happens as far as collecting the minutes during the meeting, but I don't know how you want those letters summarized or if you just want them totaled or how that should work.
Yeah, I think, I know, I know Vin Marino is on with us and I was, I was thinking, and again, I defer to him, but I think if you, if you indicate the person name and in for, in support, in favor of or against the, the high school project, I think could be, could be listed, but maybe he's got a better idea. I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I don't have a printer, for instance, so...
Yeah, I can, that's not a problem. I'll, I'll print them all out. I have printed them all out already. I'll scan those.
Addresses are needed as well. That's not something I have access to.
Yeah.
So I just need to make sure it's streamlined.
I can have Gina work on that tomorrow, put the name, address, and then support, and put it on a sheet to prepare and scan that over to you.
Mike, I'm going to share my, the letter that I have during the public hearing.
Oh, you are? Okay, I got you, Marie. Okay.
Is there anything else, Mike?
Not for citizen's statements, no. I think that was, that was in that, in that batch, mostly around the school. Nothing yet on the, on the budget at this point.
Okay. All right, so nothing, there's nothing other resignations and appointments. So we'll go with a new business. Just a quick note, at 7:30, we have a public hearing for proposed ordinance 2020-1, which amends Charter, excuse me, Chapter 213 entitled Taxation. Just as a big note, so as soon as we hit 7:30, we'll roll into that. 6A, award of RFQ slash P number eight Public Safety Radio System Consultant.
I will make the motion to approve RFQ slash P number eight Public Safety Radio Communication Consultant, but I also have a comment to make after a second.
I'll second.
Who's it being awarded to? Pardon? You didn't say who it was being awarded to. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have so many papers in front of me.
New England Radio Consultants.
New England Consultants. My, my only comment or question is, I noticed that in the explanation, description from that particular consultant said there were three phases or it could possibly be three phases. Does, does that amount of money that's bid in that particular contract, does that include all three phases or does that mean that's $10,500 for each phase?
Before, before we go on, Marie, before we try to answer that question, on our end here, or on my end here, there's a lot of feed, there's a feedback loop. I think somebody might have Facebook running and it, there's always a, so if we could maybe try to eliminate that or mute that, it might help with, I don't know if the rest of you see that, but on our end, it's, we're getting that feedback loop. And I think I don't hear it now, so that's great. So I would defer to either Chief Seward or Chief Halloran for the, your question, Marie, on, on the phases or 10,000, I thought was in total for the, for the project. So I don't know if Chief Halloran is there to, or Chief Seward to speak to that.
I'm here, Mike. Kev, are you there?
Yeah, I'm having computer problems here. I might have to reboot, but I'll, I'll give it a shot. My, the way that, the way that it was put out, my understanding is, is that it is three phases. So this is the first phase of the, the project.
I would agree with Chief Halloran in this and I believe that's how it's, that's how it's written, that that amount of money covers Phase One of the project.
Guys, I have, I have to reboot. I'm having some serious problems with the computer. If you just give me a minute, I'll, I'll be back.
Okay.
So I guess my question is that it technically could be 30,000, correct?
Right.
Chief Seward, do you know what the cost is for Phase Two and Three?
I don't have that paperwork in front of me, Rose. But we were, the, the premise of the RFP, RFQ was to come up with Phase One and the consultant's report would bring us to Phase Two or Phase Three if in fact there was a Phase Three.
Is that, was that your understanding with all the bids that they were only doing one?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. That, I just, it just wasn't clear to me.
I'm going to jump in if you don't mind, Chief. This is Victor. We don't know what we're getting into until we get Phase One. We have no idea what's, what's what until the study's done and bring us up to speed on what are the, what is actually going on.
So what does Phase, so Phase One is the study. What does Phase Two and Phase Three encompass?
It's all, all going to depend on what phase, what he finds in Phase One, Rose. We don't know what that, the system's so, you know, it's so, it's got so many Band-Aids on it, they don't even know what is what. He's got to dig into it, find out what the study is, find out what the coverage is and find out what our needs is, our needs are in the town. And then he can put a package together for Phase Two and Three. But he's substantially lower than the rest of the quotes were and he came highly recommended from a lot of other towns and he just finished North Haven and saved North Haven quite a bit of money.
But I, I noticed there was such a huge difference in pricing. I mean, it went up to $160,000.
That, that number is based on, well, here's how you bid a job, just like architects, engineers. So you've got a $4 million project, three and a half to $5 million. They put a number on it. They either charge 2% in the industry, 1.75 or 2.5%. That's how they base the number on. With the negotiations that both chiefs have been doing with this particular contractor to get him down to where he is, he's willing to do the studies and get us up to speed for substantial savings.
So based on what you just said there, Victor, is that ethical?
So let me, let me...
I don't understand what you mean by ethical.
Well, we have bids here and you're negotiating with one, one sub...
No, nobody negotiated anything, Tommy. He bid it the way he saw it, but he bid the project based on 2.5%. So North Haven got the same deal. He bids the project by the hour instead of for lump sum.
Okay, I, I just have a couple of questions. It's, it's, um... If all these are qualified companies, it's not usual, it's not common to have such a huge swing. And my next comment is, I believe we were told when we were first creating the, the RFP or Q or that there was only one vendor in the state to do this. I remember it being said at a public session.
So I'll, Chief Halloran, are you back on yet?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. You want to jump in?
Go ahead.
So neither Chief Halloran nor myself had any communication with the, the individual that submitted on behalf of New England Radio Consultants. He is actually from Connecticut. The signatory on that was Paul Zito. He formerly worked for the state of Connecticut. And as was already said, he has extensive experience with communication projects in Connecticut. So it doesn't surprise me that there's such a wide variety of amounts submitted. It's very common in the communications industry based upon the market right now that you'll find that. So I was not surprised at all. I was actually surprised that his amount was as low as it was. So I, I think, not having the documents in front of me, I think that the next bump up was 18 and change. And we actually looked at, Chief Halloran and myself, Deputy Chief Esposito and Deputy Chief Lovelace reviewed the proposals and we looked at those consultants that have done work in Connecticut. And if you look at where the consultants are from, it's a wide range across the US as far as Wisconsin goes. So looking at the most responsible and reliable proposal, we had selected, and again, most predicated upon his experience in Connecticut, New England Radio Consultants. So if you look at the RFP in general, the, the project in Phase One calls for him to review our current system, make a recommendation whether we should stay with our current system, whether we should migrate to another system or jump on the bandwagon of a, a potential state system and considering our mutual aid partners as well. And that was all provided across the board to each of the, to each of the vendors that submitted their proposals.
Hey Bill, wasn't, wasn't there an amendment that went out that that was one of the questions? If I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think in total, there may have been three amendments to this RFP, but that was one of them. You're absolutely right, Kev.
So it's, I'm not sure if the, the other companies just didn't understand it. But, but like Bill was saying, the, there were several that weren't too far apart in, in prices as far as I can remember.
When you look at a project like this, one person does it, does not do this by himself. So it, it may be the proprietor of the company, but that proprietor of the company is going to hire radio system architects and engineers. And in reviewing the RFPs, many of them had individual hourly rates depending upon how many others that they needed to complete the project. That's not so with New England Radio Consultants. They're basically a self-contained operation.
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to clarify one thing. I never had spoken or talked to that individual or had anything to do with the bid process at all, so I don't think there was...
Yeah, it might have been just my interpretation of what you said, Victor.
It's a little, it's a little, little rough on my hand when it's unethical. It's okay.
No, no, but you stated during their negotiations and that's what you said.
Well, everybody had questions from all the vendors about what was needed, what they had to do. So we wrote a scope of work and then there was an amendment that went out to all the bidders to clarify everything. It's, it's tough to speak on this, on this, but there's nothing unethical about it.
I was just asking a question. That's the whole...
No, I wanted to clarify it on the air because I don't want anybody to think that the department ordered the commissioners are doing anything unethical.
Okay.
No big deal.
And I asked my question because I wasn't clear whether or not that was, you know, that $10,500 was only for Phase One and that in a sense, there were going to be two more phases. It would be, you know, another maybe 10,000.
Yeah, well, we don't know what the, we don't know what the follow-up costs are going to be at this time and I believe that the scope of the first phase is to include that with this study.
I believe you're right, Kev.
That is actually correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, so Michelle, are you ready?
Okay, so let me see here. Can you just read back the motion, Michelle? Yeah. Excuse me. Counselor Diamond moved seconded by Counselor Paternoster to award RFP number eight Public Safety Radio System Consultants to New England Radios Consultants LLC, NERC, for $10,500 or $150 per hour. Can you just put in there, I think we should put that this is for Phase One only. Okay. Are you okay with that amendment, Marie? Yes. Okay.
Yep.
Hi. Would you like me to do a roll or should I do with all in favor?
You know, maybe all in favor is fine unless someone opposes, then we'll go around the...
Okay. With all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Michelle. Next item, discussion of impossible action on proposed ordinance 220-1, which amends Chapter 213 of the Code of the Town of North Branford entitled Taxation.
I think we have to wait until after the public hearing.
Right, yeah, we'll have to skip over that.
All right, sorry. Financial report as of March 31st, 2020.
Anthony, you're on, right?
He was.
Yeah, Anthony.
Just give me a second to go back to my Dropbox.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, the, the top line, the property taxes that we typically focus about even the prior period, 98.8 compared to 99.1, a slight decrease, but nothing to be concerned about. The delinquent taxes, the next line down, see a significant increase in the collection of delinquent taxes. Also, you see a previous hefty number, the next line down on supplemental property taxes, which is typically people buying new cars and that's, that's a good sign, again, all prior to COVID, obviously, but overall revenue percent or so below last year, but nothing to be concerned about. On the expense side, the only department that's showing over expended is technology and if you had the full-blown out report, you would see that it's not truly over expended on out-the-door money, just on POs. So nothing to be concerned about on the expense side of the house. And again, it appears to be about a percent or so higher on the expense side, but nothing to be concerned about. Otherwise, it's unremarkable.
Okay.
Thanks, Anthony. Next item, contingency appropriation.
This is an item that the council put into contingency as they were preparing a 1920 budget. This item is under negotiation still. This is the amount that the Communications Department will need to cover the rental cost based on the current monthly charge to the balance of this fiscal year.
Well, if it's still under negotiations, what is this price then? Why is there an increase if it's still under negotiation?
That's a good question. I would defer to the town attorney who's been handling the negotiations. It's still between the town attorney, the property owner's attorney. They're still going back and forth and reviewing. If this is the final amount so far, it may not be the final amount.
I don't know.
So is Vinnie with us?
Well, I see Courtney's on now.
I'm sorry. I was on, I was talking, but I was muting myself.
Oh, just, our question is on the Oakenhouse Tower. Is that settled or are you still negotiating?
We're still in the middle of negotiations. Basically, I think Mike, the town manager, put a number in as a placeholder. We had provided a draft lease with a proposal to the property owner almost a month ago, but we have not heard back from him at this point in time. I would say his expectations, I think, are great, but I don't think they're consistent with what the town is going to want to pay. So depending upon what he comes back at, we may want to explore alternative sites. But I think for purposes of budget, this is simply a placeholder. Because I don't think we're going to have resolution before you adopt the budget.
Well, this is, what, the item that we're on is a contingency appropriation to pay him something from now to the end of the year.
And that is, yeah, that was part of, part of the discussion at the table in terms of a good faith effort to continue with Joe without shutting the, shutting the, the, shutting us off because of the underpayment that he felt was, was for a significant amount of years. And so it was just a good faith effort to move forward, keep negotiations going. And I thought by this time, we'd have it all worked out and hammered out. And like Vin says, I think we're just trying to keep, keep a lid on it and keep it reasonable. But, you know, there's, there's, there's an issue there in terms of accurate pricing and I'm not sure what that final number is going to be.
I would take his exception to an initial amount of years. It wasn't that case.
What was that, Mike? I didn't hear the whole thing.
Mike said it was a underpayment for initial years. It wasn't that case. That, that's not a true statement.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that Joe was, Joe was claiming it was a significant deal for the town for a number of years with, and, you know...
That's, that's how he feels.
Yeah.
That's, he feels that the town got the better of his, of his siblings. Whether or not that's true, we can, you know, everyone can have their own position.
That was an agreement, that was an agreement for years then.
Exactly.
There was no problem with that. That was an agreement for years.
Exactly.
So there was nobody, there was nobody lost on that, nobody gained on that, you know? It was, it was a fair negotiated deal because I negotiated that deal.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. It's, it, it was, they got the benefit of the bargain that they, that they made.
It was, it was, it was fine until the successor got a little greedy. We'll put it that way.
So at this point, Joe has, it sounds like he's talked, spoken to some people in the industry and/or gone to a seminar or two on the subject and is coming back and trying to make up, I believe, for what he perceives to be as lost revenue over the last period of time. But we, again, we have not heard back from him in some period of time on the proposed contract that we put before him.
So at this point, Vin, do we just defer this contingency transfer?
It's $18,000.
Yeah, I feel, why?
I, I'm a little leery to, to do it if you're still in negotiations.
Well, it's not going to go below $18,000. I believe, Vin, what, was it 23 or something like that at one point?
Yes.
But it's not going to go below $18,000 and it's a good faith payment that we're making to make the negotiations go further.
Well, wait a minute. What do we get for $18,000? What do we buy besides good faith?
You have positions on radio towers for your antennas. You don't want to pay, you don't want to pay, take your antennas off the tower.
Thanks, Mike. For how long do we get for the $18,000?
This is per year now.
But this $18,000 takes us to June 30th of 2020 or longer?
June 30th.
June 30th.
Yeah, June 30th. You, you haven't paid the whole first part of the year. This is what happens when people get greedy.
All right, we, we know that, we know there's a history here. We're just trying to understand what we're doing going forward. $18,000 just gets us to the end of the fiscal year. Eighteen thousand dollars just gets us to the end of the fiscal year. We've got nothing thereafter.
Right.
And, and you say it's not going to go lower than the eighteen thousand, but it could go higher, so that's part of the negotiations?
Initially, we were looking at, at an offset. The, the assessor assessed the, the tower at a value that was substantially greater than previously assessed, which generated a tax of, I believe, almost twenty-eight thousand dollars, which was a shocking tax that the property owner did not expect. And the resolution, I believe the town manager and I were, were discussing, since this was something that the town had not realized previously until the assessor examined the cell tower, was to basically do an offset. So, to the extent that the property owner paid us his tax, we would pay that money back to the property owner as rent. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's how these discussions started. And then the property owner, I believe, has taken the position that, in addition to that, they should be entitled to some lease payment. And he's gone beyond that now, to say maintenance expenses and things of that nature, things that the town has not historically paid. But he's an, he's an interesting person to negotiate with, and I'm going to leave it at that for the moment.
Well, Vinnie? Mike?
Yeah.
Who's talking?
This Dave, Buckings. Dave speaking, David Ambrose, the assessor. Just a point, the cell tower, until last year, was never, ever assessed prior to last year, so I want to make that point before we move on with the conversation.
Yeah, that's, that's what, what triggered the whole process, was the, the assessment going out, as, as Vin just explained in terms of a tax bill, and that's what triggered the whole...
Yeah, but I don't understand who's... What I'm saying is, you know, the tower was valued, had a credible market value.
Right.
It was, it was, it was a reasonable value to the, to the cell towers, so that's...
Well, now you got a reasonable value on the use of the cell tower, so...
I'm sorry?
Now you got a reasonable use on the cell tower, reasonable lease on the cell tower, which you didn't have before.
Okay.
Who else uses that cell tower besides the, the tower?
There are four other co-users on the tower. T-Mobile, Sprint, Verizon, one more. So, there, there's, there's four co-users, and actually, it's, it's a, the revenue generated is quite substantial, so, and the valuation was predicated upon income approach. So, and there were values, the tower was valued the same manner as the other towers in town owned by SBA and AT&amp;T.
I'd just like to ask a question from the police department and fire department's needs. Maybe somebody can answer, but is Parsonage Hill the main supplier for all the PD and the fire right now?
Yeah, Victor, I'll jump in and speak on behalf of the fire department. So, you, you got to understand, eighty, Parsonage Hill Road?
Yep, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, so on the property, besides the, the buildings and other taxable items, there's three towers. One is a cell tower. The two others are not cell towers. The two others are communication towers, and the fire department and police department and public works have transmitters in the buildings at the base of these towers. On the tallest tower, which is, as soon as you went down the driveway, it's about two-hundred-and-seventy-four feet in height, are the primary antennas and transmit equipment for police, fire, and public works. On the lower tower, which is not a cell tower, is our backup systems.
So, if he decided to say, get out of there, how bad, what's the impact to the police department, public works, and the fire department?
So, from the fire department's standby, it would be catastrophic and a, a life safety hazard for everybody in this community.
So, it'd be the same for the police and public works, correct?
Would be the same for the police, that's correct.
All right. And, thank you.
But let's stop this discussion in public for just a second, please. I, I think this is something that is probably more appropriately handled, not on a public forum. Does the eighteen thousand dollars cover all three towers?
Yes.
All right, I move to approve the appropriation transfer.
Did anybody second it?
Yeah, I did.
Just to be clear, that's eighteen thousand on top of what's already in the budget. It's not eighteen thousand total for the year.
It's whatever's in the contingency.
It's eighteen thousand zero sixty.
Correct, on top of what's already in the budget. That's what I'm telling you.
Yes.
Which, how much, Anthony?
Uh, I think it's about twelve or thirteen that we've paid historically.
And what are you saying, we haven't paid it yet?
We, we paid some installments, as Mike had mentioned, Mike Paulus, on a good faith to keep some revenue flowing to Joe throughout the year, but this is the balance of the bill now for the fiscal year that will require the additional appropriation contingency to cover the budget.
All right. What I'm trying to handle on is, what are we paying? Ten or thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand a year, SWOOC code. Is that really thirty thousand?
That's the current number as we sit here now, yes.
So, what's to prevent it from going up next year?
Nothing.
Well, they're still in negotiations.
That's what we're, yeah, that's what we're negotiating, to try to get fixed numbers so that we have, basically, it would be a five-year term with renewal options that would provide us potentially with twenty to thirty years of additional time on the towers with escalators built in so that we know year to year what the annual rent will be, trying to get it into what would be a normal cell tower lease arrangement, or if we cannot reach resolve with the property owner to look at alternative sites and see if we can get a cell tower developer to put something up to accommodate our emergency services needs. So, there's, it's, it's right now a, a bit of a moving target until we get the property owner to come back and tell us exactly what he's looking for.
Anthony, if we approve this appropriation transfer, is that just funds available for Vinnie to go back and talk? Or are we obligating ourselves to actually pay the eighteen thousand in addition to the twelve?
The final payment has not been made yet, so if you direct us to sit on it until the negotiation is completed, that's what we'll do. The final bill was sent in, and when the account was analyzed to see what was in the budget compared to what the final amount is, this is the amount needed to cover based on the property owner's current billing. But we could certainly, we could certainly sit on it until Vin gets the final deal culminated and then payment.
All right. So, we, we can still give Vinnie the opportunity to talk and use his discretion and come back to us with a final recommendation?
Certainly.
So, are you withdrawing your motion?
Absolutely not.
No?
Any more discussion?
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thanks. So, we're going into the public hearing. Mike, you're...
Tom, you just want to read through the notice?
Yes, will do. Notice of public hearing. The town, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at seven-thirty PM, with no in-person attendance in accordance with Governor's令, Executive Order seven regarding COVID-nineteen. The purpose of this public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-one, which amends chapter two fifteen of the code of the town of North Branford entitled Taxation, to include the following new language. The filing requirement set forth in section three twelve of Article Three of the North Branford Town Code, any taxpayers who are granted the benefit for the two thousand eighteen grant list fiscal year two thousand twenty, and who are required to rectify by May fifteenth, two thousand twenty, or the two thousand nineteen grant list fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, are hereby suspended. Such taxpayers shall automatically maintain their benefits for the next fiscal year, and for each successive year that the Governor's Declaration of Public Health and Civil Preparedness and Emergencies, Executive Orders Number Seven, remains in effect. The filing requirement set forth in section three twelve dash nineteen of Article Five of the North Branford Town Code, any taxpayers who were granted the benefit in two thousand nineteen and who are required to rectify by October first, two thousand twenty, are hereby suspended. Such taxpayers shall automatically maintain their benefits for the next fiscal year, and for each successive year that the Governor's Declaration of Public Health and Civil Preparedness and Emergencies, Executive Orders Number Seven, remains in effect. The filing requirement set forth under section three twelve dash twenty-three of Article Six of the North Branford Town Code, for any taxpayers who are granted the benefit in two thousand nineteen and who are required to rectify by October first, two thousand twenty, are hereby suspended, and such taxpayers shall automatically maintain their benefits for the next fiscal year, and for each successive year that the Governor's Declaration of Public Health and Civil Preparedness and Emergencies, Executive Orders Number Seven, remains in effect. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk and posted on the town's website, dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this sixteenth day of April two thousand twenty. Lisa A. Valenti, MMC, North Branford Town Clerk.
Yeah, Tom, we also have David Ambrose on the line that could outline the program real briefly before any, any public comment, just so the public understands.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Sure, Mike. The town's tax relief program is a slight variation from the state's program of tax relief for elderly and disabled homeowners. Am I clear, Mike?
Yes.
Am I coming through?
Yep.
Okay. Both the state and North Branford's program are offered to homeowners sixty-five years or older who are also, or who are considered disabled by United States Social Security Administration. The only measurable difference between the state program and our program is the income requirement. Our program qualifies homeowners whose income exceeds the state limits. For example, the state's income limit for married applicant is five thousand compared to our income limit of fifty-two thousand five hundred. The state's income for unmarried applicants is thirty-seven thousand dollars compared to North Branford's income limit of forty-four five. The total income includes SSI and the gross taxable income from the applicant's tax return. If anybody asks, it's line seven B on the ten forty. Uh, let's see, we have a hundred eighty-seven households who are on both, are on both the state and local program, and forty-one households who are eligible for the local program only. As you know, we only receive a pilot payment for the state program. The tax impact for the local program is sixty-five thousand dollars. You know, it's by experience that homeowners really truly appreciate this program. It's a, on behalf of the town, that they really count this money on the annual basis.
Great, thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
So, I'm just going to have to, Tom, if, if I can, I'm going to just break away for a minute just to tech, with the technician to see if there are any posts.
Mike?
Yeah.
Just, just for the public and for the council, the, the purpose of the amendment is so that those who are in this class that are more susceptible to this virus do not have to come out and reapply and recertify that they're eligible, as the state has done with the state programs where they just automatically recertify anyone that was eligible in the prior fiscal year for the coming fiscal year. That's the intent of this, is to protect the elderly from the virus by not making them come out unnecessarily. That's the sole purpose of this amendment.
Thanks, Vin.
And in anticipation of approval of the amendment, our software system is ready to go, so there won't be any hiccups in the process. The July tax bills will reflect, if the amendment is approved, the bills will reflect the local benefit of three hundred dollars.
So, Tom, I'm not showing any public comment at this point.
So, public, motion to adjourn?
Well, motion to, yeah, close the hearing.
Close the hearing, yeah. So moved.
I'm sorry, I did not hear who moved that.
It was Joe, Joe Fornit.
And Marie, Marie seconded.
Thank you.
Mike, before we vote, could you just check and make sure there's still no further comment?
One second, I'll be right back. No comment.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Michelle.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thanks.
Okay, so, next slide. Appropriation transfers.
You have basically three appropriation transfers in front of you, a couple small ones for police and communication, and the large one on the bottom is just following the budget where the ambulance subsidy is budgeted under the ambulance fund, but acts as an operating transfer out to the ambulance fund separately, so it's got to be moved from the ambulance department and the general fund down to the operating transfer out.
I make a motion to approve the appropriation transfers.
Thank you.
That was Ron that seconded, Michelle.
Any discussion? Michelle?
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Next item, approvals, tax refunds.
No move.
Second?
Rose made the motion.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thanks.
Citizen's statements?
Tom, should we go back to that item on the agenda? We had a waiting for the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry. So back to 6B, discussion and possible action on proposed ordinance 2000, number 2020-1, which amends Chapter 213 of the Code of the Town of North Branford entitled Taxation.
I make a motion to accept the amendment.
Second?
Any discussion? Yep.
That was Angeloni Diamond?
Yes.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
All right, now we're at citizen's statements, petitions, correspondence. Anything? Anything, Mike?
Just checking. None.
Deputy Mayor, while he's checking, I have just one comment, Anthony. I think the, I think the earlier comment that characterized the assessor as being greedy was erroneous and wasn't an accurate portrayal of what him doing his job was. As he mentioned, he costed the tower out in a way that was consistent with the other cell towers in town, and it had not been costed out previously. And I don't want to put restraints on him for fear of retribution or backlash on the other side. I think he needs to do his job and to assess all the property equally and consistently. And that's what he was doing in this case. And I think to portray him as greedy was not accurate.
I didn't portray him as greedy. I said it was a greedy move. I didn't, I didn't say he did it specifically. And when, when a bill jumps up over $20,000 per year, it's never been like that, because all of a sudden we're assessing a tower at a higher rate instead of doing a little research and finding out what the story is. You're going to pay that $30,000 plus a year, every year for the next 10 years. That's a $20,000 increase, because somebody didn't, you know, do their legwork and look into it and see the reason why. So, yeah, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with $20,000 increase. And I could say a lot more than just greedy. I could say that's stupid.
All right, let's, let's be professional. So, let's, we are. Any other comments or statements? Do you have nothing, Mike?
I don't have any comments coming through at this point now.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, because I couldn't unmute. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, have a good night, everybody.
Well, now we have the budget.
We'll, we'll take. Okay, Tom?
Yep.
We're all set.
Okay, like to call the budget hearing fiscal year 2020-21, special Town Council meeting in North Branford, Connecticut, at 8:04 PM, April 21st, 2020. Do a salute to the flag again?
Sure.
Okay. Budget allegiance to the flag. Hold call.
Mayor Vic Leone is absent. Deputy Mayor Zampano? Counselor Angeloni? Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Duty? Counselor Duty?
He's, Mike.
Right here.
There he is.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Code?
Here.
Counselor Paternoster?
Here.
Counselor Pollicia? Thanks.
Presentation of fiscal year 2020-21 budget, Town manager.
Okay, stand by, I'm going to try to load up the presentation. Okay, I think already, if you can see the first page, we're all set. So I have to start by saying, obviously, this is prepared prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. And certainly, things, things have changed, but I'll try and get through the fact that our budget process tries to set priorities in allocating resources and reviewing with departments and making adjustments, and then finally submitting to the, to the council. And then from the council, they review the proposal, hold the workshops, public hearing, make final adjustments to the budget, and hold a vote in May. Of course, that is all changed because of the COVID-19 pandemic. But typically, we talk about, or I go through and talk about the budget challenges on the town's side. Certainly, again, this year, state issues, the uncertainty of state revenue impacts the local share. At this point, relying on the state revenue about, you know, makes up approximately 20% of our operating budget. And of course, we have to balance that with the unfunded mandates in addition to the revenue stream from the state, ever-increasing mandates that come every year. Local issues that we try to balance in terms of maintaining town services and infrastructures when costs are escalating. Pressure from departments, as you know, to increase staffing to try and meet resident service demands, and the new tasks, obviously mandated by the state that they ask us to do. Budget challenges, I use this slide every year. It kind of tells the tale of what's happening in the declining state revenue from a high in 14, 15. In fact, that might not even be the high. That's a most relative high. We go back even further than that, you'd probably see higher numbers with, with respect to state revenue. So clearly, fallen from $9 million in fiscal year 14, 15 to $7,331,325 for the current fiscal year. So, you know, it's a trend that's not, not helpful to us. Budget highlights this year. Total budget expenditures at an increase of 3.53. That breaks down to the town government operations at 5.78%. You've heard from the Board of Education in their budget presentation, and we'll hear from them, about 2.71%, with the debt service practically flat or slight, slight decrease at .02. Proposed budget, general government budget, looking at an increase of the 5.78% at 904,592. Much of what drives that, obviously, is the, are the wages and contractual obligations. Clearly, that makes up close to 40%. You'll see in another slide that in addition to the contractual, I mean, from, with the contractual, along with the services and insurances, make up another 30% of the budget. But debt service, obviously, is, is, is where it's at at level. Education at 2.71. Capital improvements, down slightly year over year by $92,000. So total of 1, 1,871,551 at 353. And again, this is all put together prior to the pandemic. And obviously, that has thrown us into an economic tailspin. And obviously, I've tried to adjust and respond to that and have a few slides at the end that we can, we can go into. But on the revenue side, financing the budget, we've got to rely on the grand list. And the grand list, fortunate, had some growth, not great, but not anemic, so 1.11% generates for us about $468,222 in terms of grand list growth. So there's one little bright spot there with respect to grand list growth that certainly helps us in our process. So financing the, the budget, as you know, we use fund balance and certainly look at decreases in debt service that, that help us. And you look at the numbers there from previous fiscal years. This year, we were looking at, again, before we, we went into a tailspin, we were looking at reducing the fund balance from $600,000 this year to $350,000. And I think the fund balance allocation was certainly within the normal range. You can see that 19, fiscal year 19, 18, we did as high as $750,000. So, again, it's a tool that the Town Council can use as they see, you know, as necessary. So financing the budget, again, this is pre-COVID. Talking about hoping that interest income would improve in interest rates go. Right now, nobody knows. There's no certainty to that, other than they may stay low for some time. Permit revenue, hard to say. We're probably going to see a decline in, in that as well in real estate conveyance. I'm not sure anything's moving, what's, what's happening there. So, hard to say. Again, this is sort of looking at these indicators in a normal budget year, and this is not a normal budget year. So, general government expenditures, as I mentioned, personnel costs cover about 40%, a little over 40% of the budget there. Material and supplies, 3%. Contractual services, I mentioned. Between that and the benefits insurance make up another 30% of the budget. Capital outlay, .67. Operating transfers, your debt service, capital improvement plan, 1.254. So, that's a sort of a snapshot of our breakdown for expenditures in summary by, by different classifications. Expenditures for capital improvements, we've done a lot in, in the last year or two to improve our capital improvements. This year, looking at, you know, improvements requested at $1,797,760. Of those budgeted funds are, are submitted at, posed at $1,254,460. Obviously, again, subject to, to change as the council is going to have to wrestle with where it wants to land this budget. So, again, some of the items in there, some of the larger items, fire equipment reserve, 225, public works equipment reserve, 325, road improvements, 400, public work, small repairs and equipment, 25, all subject to change. So with that, we were looking at a proposed budget requirement of a mil rate of 34.76, given the fact that the increase was 1.3 mil increase or 3.53% over last year. And last year, a mil rate of 33.46. So that's what we were shooting for. One mil is equivalent to $1,258,473. Important to keep that figure in mind as we go forward in the budget deliberations and workshops. So from here, this point, you know, I had some, some thoughts about talking about what the, you know, going forward with the COVID-19 impact budget looking like, or what we're trying to get to, in my understanding, in terms of the council's consensus or goal of trying to hit a zero mil increase. That is significant with respect to the, the fact that the proposal coming in was 1.3 mil increase or the equivalent of $1,636.15. And that's at the current collection rate of 98.5%. So that's a, that's a significant dollar amount to try and reduce in order to get to a zero mil increase. Now, given that, we are looking at trying to do or propose doing something like that, given the economic crisis we're facing, is it possible that we would see a lower collection rate? Yes, it's entirely possible. So if we were to project a lower collection rate, it's going to have an impact on, 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 on revenue. And that impact, Anthony has been very helpful in terms of helping to calculate and to anticipate this issue. Having to lower that would make us increase the mil by .18. So the new, on top of a 1.3, would get us to a 1.48 mil increase with that type of collection rate at 98% flat. And that translates to $1,862,540. So certainly higher than, you know, a 98.5 collection and a mil, 1.3 mil increase. So significant dollar amount, significant hurdle to overcome with a goal of trying to get to, to zero mil increase. Can it, can it be done? Well, that remains to be seen, but here are some, some options that I'm just throwing out that we're working on, will continue to work on. I know the council is sharpening the pencils and looking at this. I know for sure that we'll be able to find some opportunities in which to look at, at capital, look at debt service, look at the operating budgets. And that's on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, that the fund balance is another tool that can be used in that. It, it's, it's, it remains to be seen how much of an increase or how much the, the council would like to allocate. And that'll be a function of where the budget workshop deliberations go. So that's essentially what I have at, at this point, and realizing that it's not a normal budget season, that we started in one direction, trying to present what I thought was a, a great year for us, setting up in, coming into this fiscal year, that our- that our finances are strong and that we have a good bond rating, a lot we wanted to do and accomplish. But obviously, there's a major curve ball here in terms of the economics and the, you know, the climate that we find ourselves in. So, this is just an attempt to take a look at understanding the magnitude and the goal if we're trying to reduce the impact to the local taxpayer. I don't know if there are any questions?
Yeah, Mike, what is the fund balance right now?
I don't know, but I think it's rather healthy, but Anthony might have that number. Anthony, if you're on?
At the end of last year's audit, it was eight point five million dollars.
And what is that as a percentage of this year's budget, Mike?
About almost sixteen percent. Our policy calls for ten.
Right.
Unassigned.
Mike, I have a question in regard, in your slides on the Board of Ed increase. That is a number that's different than what they sent us. And is that due to the teacher retirement last year? Did you just net that out? Because we had that on a separate line item of approximately eighty-three thousand dollars.
I don't think I accounted for that. I think I just lifted the number from their presentation.
Well, what they sent us was an increase of nine fifty-nine, one forty-nine. But that's, you're in the eight hundred thousands on your slides.
Yeah, I think I'm lagging behind there in terms of updated information.
From what I could see from doing the numbers, it was, we had that eighty-three thousand, I think it was eighty-three, five eleven, on a separate line item last year, because that was the number from the teacher retirement that they were possibly going to assess us. So, we purposely broke it out from the Board of Ed budget as a separate line item. And this year, I don't think there was any talk of that.
Not that I recall.
So, I just need, for when we start budget talks tomorrow night, I just need to make sure that that clarification, exactly what the right number is.
That's it for me on my side, and if there are more questions, I'll begin to load up the superintendent's presentation and turn it over to the Board of Ed.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Okay. Just give me a moment to switch over. Okay, so the North Branford Public Schools, first slide should be loaded there on your screen. If it's not, let me know.
I see it.
Okay, so I can turn this over to Board of Education, and Scott, I believe, is on the line. And I'll wait to hear from him. If not, I'll run over. They are here in the other room, so I'll see if we can get them set up.
Can you hear me, Michael?
Oh, there you are. Yep, sure can.
So, we're gonna, we'll move through the first probably four or five slides quite quickly. If you can leave them up, I'll cue you to switch slides so the viewing audience has a chance to read through. The first several slides speak to our strategic plan, and I'm not going to read through those word for word. Obviously, we'll get to the numbers. And then I know there were a series of questions that were sent to us, and we'll review those as well.
Okay. Tell me where you want to stop or start there.
Let's go back to the beginning. Go back. Okay, as part, no, okay, go first slide. All right, thank you. Our vision and mission is stated throughout, I'm not going to read that to you, but it speaks educating the whole child, all children in our pre-K through twelve continuum up to the student's age of twenty-one if they are in our eighteen to twenty-one program. Mission of the school, school climate, we spend a great deal of time and energy making our schools as safe as possible and growing children to be responsible twenty-first century citizens of the world. Okay, thank you. Our core beliefs. Go ahead. Our priorities, we obviously looked at the pre-K twelve curriculum. The focus on instructional practices, as always, the integration of many more STEM opportunities into our curriculum, looking at kindergarten through grade twelve through Project Lead the Way, which is an engineering program. We're looking to bring that down and expand it from the high school to the middle school down to the elementary school. And looking to capture opportunities with NBIS and the high school, having the same start and end times and the same schedule. Starting this next year, we'll be able to share staff, do a lot of creative things with our staff and to expand opportunities for our students. Okay? Our priorities, obviously, the facilities. We're not going to speak to the high school this evening, that'll be another meeting, but obviously, looking at keeping them as instructional and sound as possible, as clean as possible, and kept up and make sure they're safe and secure for students and staff. Continue with our professional learning with best practices, high-quality instruction and resources needed to improve teaching and learning. Class sizes, obviously, is critical at all levels, so we're looking to maintain effective class sizes. We spoke about our shared resources with the high school and intermediate school schedule and to continue with a robust offering of extracurricular and athletic opportunities for all students. Okay? So, as Michael mentioned before, the lion's share of the budget increase, obviously, is the Board of Ed, with the largest budget, with the highest number of employees. We presented to the council last week with the number, the correct number is two point nine eight. I know, Michael, you reported two point seven one, but the number was for a nine five nine, two four nine increase, which equates to two point nine. Okay?
Yep.
This is what we looked at. Those who have been through budget presentations in the past, I think you'll find that this was, it's very user-friendly. It's concise, it's transparent, it speaks to the way in which things are now going to be itemized throughout the budget process. Everything was evaluated, looked at, analyzed. And a lot of line items were put in proper categories for ease of function and to do it the proper way. So, these were some of the things that we looked at, all salaries, budgets, all utilities. We broke out and re-itemized things, put them in the right places. So, when we move forward and continue to improve this simplicity when looking at it, it'll be more user-friendly next year. Okay? Enrollment is remaining steady for pre-K through twelve, which obviously equates to thirteen grade levels. We're looking at a decrease in fifteen students or just over one student per grade level, so that's really insignificant. If you're looking at enrollment trends, we have leveled off with our enrollment. We're looking to continue to focus on that eighth grade class. And with continued offerings at the high school and the potential for improving that facility, we feel very confident that our retention numbers will be even higher in the years to come if we're able to move forward with a state-of-the-art facility. Okay? Still breaking it out, salary equated for just over fifty-seven percent of the budget. The benefits attached were about seventeen percent of an outside tuition. So, over eighty percent of the budget are on salary benefits and outside tuition for identified students. The breakdown below is how they are reflected in the line items, with a brief definition of what went into those categories. Okay? The increases and where they're coming from. With tuition is the highest, those are mandated by a child's IEP, and they can be quite costly. We don't control many of the situations. It could be students moving into the district that are coming from other districts, and we have to honor their placements or students that we have that are outplaced as well. Transportation was, there was a question about that, and that was, the greatest jump there was because of pre-purchased fuel. That's what we are not doing next year. So, that was the increase, the biggest increase on the transportation. Okay? Just breaks it out. As you can see, the salary and benefits feed, so the lion's share in the chart. Okay? Breakout by school and district. Okay? Increases, which equates to the two point nine eight or nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. We were looking at eight items, I believe, that are listed, adding a Spanish teacher at NBIS so that we would have a full year of Spanish for seventh grade. We implemented eighth grade a year ago, so we're looking to add another full year of Spanish. Part of the intermediate school wheel, here, as I mentioned, looking at STEM opportunities through Project Lead the Way, pre-K through five, that's grade five, looking at a prescribed program that would bring engineering and opportunities in sciences for our youngest of learners. Workbooks, other ancillary textbooks for Spanish for the social studies programs and digital textbooks, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. High school, new course in advanced placement government, which is a college-level course. We currently have eleven advanced placement courses at the high school. And we run the UConn English program, where students can earn college credits, excuse me, through University of Connecticut, through their curriculum and content, and taught by one of our teachers. New equipment for twenty-nine thousand and financial software, which was part of the ALIO system for support and training. So, totaling those items, one hundred and ninety-one thousand or point six percent. So, if you were to separate our increases and have the status quo number, it would be at two point three eight. The additional point six oh is made up of the eight line items above. Okay? I'm not going to read that to you. I explained that we're looking to move that program to seventh grade. Students the opportunity for a full year of Spanish. Okay? Advanced placement offerings, these are college-level courses that students, if they achieve a three or higher on them, can earn college credit. It is out of five points in the assessment. Many students who capture some of those scores of three or higher are able to eliminate up to a semester of college course requirements and quite a bit of tuition money by transferring those credits into their college if they are accepted. We have some students that graduate with five, six, seven advanced placement courses, which is. Okay? We spoke about the engineering program. We're obviously very focused right now on the district. You've heard Roger Sawway speak continuously about the manufacturing and the shortage of labor, not only in Connecticut, but about the country in manufacturing. There's many opportunities right here in New England for students to be career-ready upon graduation from high school. We are looking to capture some of those opportunities with the makeup of our student population in Old Sable, excuse me, North Branford, to pair with our Project Lead the Way and give students the opportunity to go through and learn skill sets such as welding, CNC machinery, and other things in the manufacturing field to be ready, prepared to gain employment upon graduation. Okay? Resources for our math program at both TBS and the high school. Okay? Capital, we did not include anything for the high school because of, obviously, the other part that we've been discussing. The ones that are listed are just preliminary estimates, and they're not actual bid prices. Okay? They're all listed there. If you have a chance to go through some of the parking lots now coming off of the winter, and it really wasn't a bad winter, I think you'll recognize that many of our parking lots are in serious need of some work. And obviously, that can happen over time, but it's certainly something that we want to keep out in the forefront because they're really suffering in some of the schools more than others, obviously. Okay? So, the questions that were submitted by the council, I'm just going to read through them. You did receive those questions. I will read the question. I'm assuming you all have the responses. You were sent those this afternoon. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so starting with the first question. There's an increase of approximately seventy-six thousand. The new initiative for Project Lead the Way, K five makes up thirty-four thousand of this increase. What is the rest for? Were there any questions on the explanation for the next-generation science requirements and for us keeping with the standards in order to implement those programs? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Utilities, it looks like there are now separate accounts for natural gas, electricity, propane, diesel. What is the amount in utilities implied in supplies? Energy for is the bulk of the diesel accounts are buses, which is a yes. We did send you a spreadsheet with all expenditures. I'm assuming that you had that. Michael Vaughn is here with me this evening. If you have any specific questions about that spreadsheet, you can ask them at that time. The diesel is not in the utility line.
So, we broke it out for things like propane, fuel, electricity, sewer assessment, for transparency. The seventeen thousand that is listed there is for sewer assessment.
So, the seventeen thousand that's listed there is for sewer assessments. Any questions on that with the?
I have a question on the diesel. If we prepaid for the diesel last year and with the unexpected school closing, what happens to all of that diesel?
So, the question is that if we pre-purchased all that diesel this past year, if we have that diesel, what are we doing? Are we just sitting on it and we're paying up storage?
I believe the amount that we prepaid was almost all used up, but I would have to check on that.
Okay. Did you hear the response? The amount?
I did.
The amount that was prepaid is, it's almost used up at this point. We can find out what we have left.
I will get that.
We will get that number. Obviously, the cost right now is at an all-time low. This would be certainly a time if we can purchase, that's another conversation. So, we will find out on the diesel what we have left from our pre-purchased amount in gallons. I don't, I'm assuming there's a storage fee, so we'll find out the specifics on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Next question, what type of items are included in this account for grounds to comply with UCA O A? Greater transparency, obviously, used for all ground maintenance services on all grounds and fields. What types of items are included in this account? Is there any allocation for emergency repairs by building or sale? What types of items are included in this account, is there any allocation for emergency repairs by building, how much per building? I'm not going to read all of that to you, you have that explanation, it's quite lengthy.
Basically broken out according to function, so it could be for construction, it could be for facilities, it could be for any number of things, so when we code, we code the object with the correct corresponding function. And that, though, all of those account numbers together make up the object of 430 that you're seeing. So very briefly, there's purchase service there for general instruction things, there's purchase service for music, so repairs of all the district owned musical instruments and piano tuning, so different things like that, anything done by an outside vendor would fall underneath the 430 object.
Any questions on those line items that were explained in that paragraph? And I'm not going to read all of them to you, you can take a look and just see if there's anything that's specific.
So how much, I noticed in your budget from the year before, there was an individual amount for each school for emergency repairs. So is that still carried in this account for next year? And if so, what's the, what's the dollar amount that you're allocating?
We budgeted for known things, known repairs such as hood cleaning, grease cleaning, all of the facility related items, there's really nothing in there that I could say is, you know, definitely emergency. And of course, I can't speak to how the current budget was put together because I was not here.
Okay.
Hey Scott, is this, is this part of the overview you did that's, I think it was titled Buildings and Grounds?
You, you lost me on that question, Tom. This is what part of it?
This is just says grounds, object for, or object 420 grounds. But in your summary, when you walk through this, this coming year's budget, you had listed like transportation and, and one of the lines I think was titled Buildings and Grounds or Grounds and Building?
Yeah, yeah.
And it was a negative, and I was just wondering why it's reduced for this year?
The 420 now?
No, so the 420 is one component of that Building and Grounds subtitle. So in that Buildings and Grounds subtitle, you'll have object 420, you'll have object 613, which is for custodial supply. You may have some purchase service under 430, you may have some dues and fees if there are things that the facilities department needs to pay for, you'll have all of the utility things. So 622, which is electricity, your fuel, propane, you know, sewer assessment, all those separate objects fall underneath Buildings and Grounds. So you can't compare just object 420 to the, the category of Buildings and Grounds.
No, thanks, and I, that wasn't my intent, my intent was to ask why that, that line in your overview was, was reduced this year?
I'll have, we'll have to pull it and find where it's reduced specifically.
Well, overall, I mean, we, we looked at all past year, past year's expenditures and looked at every, basically every single line in the budget and we budgeted for what are the actual needs. So if there is a reduction reflected in Buildings and Grounds, that means we found that we didn't need what was currently listed for the current year.
Okay.
You could say it's responsible budgeting, Tom.
It, it was in brackets, so it was a negative, so I was just wondering.
Did you hear my response?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I said, I think you could call that responsible budgeting. She, they went, she went through this line by line and if it wasn't expended, it was reduced down, you know, moving forward.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Unanticipated placements, there, we don't have any right now, we budgeted per child for next year. And we're going on a case by case, and if, if there is a situation where we have unanticipated, we'd have to be responsible and, and look at all of our expenditures to be able to fund potential students being, you know, outplaced. We do know that we have potentially some students that could be coming back into the district. So it's a balance, it's an ebb and flow of potential going out, potential coming back into the district. And this was the responsible economical way to, to put that item out there without increasing and putting a number in there that wasn't realistic. Any questions on that? That's student for student. Okay, new account for 2021, which account was used in current budget, software. Object 695 is a new object created for transparency and to comply with UCOA. In previous years, there was not a consistent and uniform way to code these expenditures. Expenditures for software can be found in many different lines across the budget and over the years. So again, it's for being more consistent, more transparent, coupling items together that should be together so that it's very user friendly for anyone who picks that up. Not hearing any questions? Object 720, building improvement, it looks like this was moved to another account because nothing budgeted for 2021, what account, if any, did this move to and how much is allocated? There were not any funds requested for building improvements, renovations or upgrades, therefore no funds were requested. And there's silence, I'm taking there's no questions with that. Object 730, equipment, how much is allocated to buildings and what type of equipment would this cover? Objects are used with appropriate program function number to request specific equipment, so if you look down, there's eight line items there, they're all descriptive in nature of what they were for and how much the cost was. Any questions on the eight lines, three, six, eight lines, eight lines there? With the explanation? No?
I don't, I don't.
Okay? Transportation, 2020 budget proposes 7.7 increase over last year, please provide the detail for breakdown, was covered for transportation, full detail, what makes up 7.7 to 21 increase? That was your interest last time before was the big transportation thing? And what's going to happen, you know, with that moving forward, we had a conversation with DATCO. On Thursday of last week, we had a conference call, we're continuing to work with them. There are 30 other districts that work with DATCO, we're kind of working with all of those districts that have them as a contractor, obviously with the executive order and the language about transportation and, and paying employees and the CARES Act and everything else. That's going to be day by day, week by week, we're hoping to find out information, are we going back on May 20th, are we not? What's that going to look like and then make some decisions from there? So we did have good conversations with them. They want to be fair, we want to be fair, we've been with them as a transport provider for many years and we're just trying to work through the details now as we move forward. We do know that any buses that were booked for sports teams per se for the spring that are not going to be used, will either be paid back to us or credited to us. Anything with field trips or anything of that nature outside of the academic day. So we know we can start with that. Diesel fuel is the largest increase for transportation because diesel was not budgeted for in 1920. It appears that diesel was prepaid at the end of 1819. Okay, elevator status. So I'm going to read this to you, okay? In May of 2019, the elevator failed and a short term repair was completed by Schindler, which lasted for two weeks. Bid specs were then prepared by the Board of Ed and approved by the town and the bid was then awarded to Bay State Elevator. In order to complete the refurbished elevator, Bay State Elevator had to manufacture parts and was not able to begin the project until the beginning of December of 2019. It took approximately four weeks to get all the parts and the completion of the refurbished elevator was completed in the beginning of February 2020. Due to a change in the fire alarm code, extra devices needed to be placed in the elevator shaft and machine room. The existing fire alarm panel did not have enough available points to add these devices. The new panel was then ordered and installed at the high school with the completion date of around March 20th, 2020. We are currently awaiting the coordination of a date for the final inspection with the state elevator inspector and Bay State Elevator as well as Johnson Controls. Do we have, have an elevator, yes, is it working, yes, can we use it, no? So as soon as we get these inspections done, we have an elevator. Unit ventilators. There are approximately 18 unit ventilators that are stored at Public Works right now. John Florio will develop a schedule to install these units one week at a time at TBS. It is anticipated that this project will begin at the beginning of June. We're hoping potentially it could happen in May, but we're dependent, it's dependent upon really the governor with our ability to bring people in to work together in, in close quarters, it probably takes a couple of people, two to three, to install one of these units. And it takes him approximately three days to install one unit with all of the plumbing work and removal of existing ventilators. So it will take quite a bit of time this summer to complete. John's energy will be earmarked towards doing that with no students there and when he's doing the work. We'll have a better idea when we get word from the governor on, on what the rest of the school year will look like. We'd obviously like to move him into that building and get him going as soon as possible. Any questions on those two items? No?
I have a question on the elevator. So my understanding was, I recall the, the meeting we had and it was just a roundabout numbers, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was approximately $80,000 to, to hopefully repair the existing elevator.
Seventy-four thousand.
Or around 120 for a new elevator. Am I remembering that correctly?
I think it was about 74,000.
Well, so that's what I'm saying, so they're approximate numbers.
Yeah.
So the, the agreement or recommendation or approval was to purchase a new elevator, right?
Um, okay.
Yes.
Is that your question or I don't understand?
Well, because you, you, while, while you're describing it, you're using the term refurbished elevator and I just want to make sure that we're all clear.
I think Tom's, if you say whatever you bid out is what you got. Whatever, whatever you wrote in your spec coming out of Town Hall is exactly what you got.
But I, I believe that the Board of Ed was also in on that, it wasn't just the Town Hall that wrote the specs for that, Bill Chody had a big part of that also.
I'm, oh, I'm sure he did.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't understand the question, whatever, whatever bid went out and whatever you approved is what you got.
Right. My, my question was, did we purchase a refurbished elevator or did we purchase a new elevator? Because they're two different things and you, your terminology was refurbished.
I think the shell is the same, I think all the parts that go into the elevator are new.
Okay.
So I think all of your panels and your cables and everything that are associated with your panel, but I think the box itself is the same box.
And if I remember correctly, we had to use the same box because of the build of the shaft, if we got a new one, the well of the elevator wasn't deep enough.
And that's why I think we went with the lower price than the 120 something thousand dollars.
It's a shot of holes, sorry, I interjected.
So Tom, do you want something sent to you with, I mean, what the elevator is?
No, not exactly, I just want to make sure that we're using the proper terminology because
Well, if it's, I would say it's refurbished if it's the same box with new parts. Now, I would use new if it was everything torn out and there's nothing left in there from the old existing, I would say then it's a brand new elevator. I don't think that's the case, that's why I'm using refurbished.
Okay. All right.
It's the safest way to say it.
That, that was, that was the discussion during that Town Hall meeting was to, to, to purchase a new elevator because of the the ability to, to access parts, that, I remember that was a, a big part of that conversation. That's all.
Panel is new, Tom, the, the panel is new. And that was one of the issues, the panel was very old and we were having an issue with the panels and the new parts, but we, we couldn't do the actual elevator box because of the depth of the well.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I think it's safe to say that whatever was in that bid spec that came out, that everyone approved of, that's what is in the building right now. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I, I can assure you that, you know, that's, whatever you approved and whatever you budgeted for, that's what went in there. Does that help?
Yeah. Yep.
Any, any other questions, capital item, anything with things we didn't cover? Okay. Mike? I think that's, is that it for us or are we?
Yeah, unless the council has any more questions, I think that, if that's going to, where you're going to wrap up.
I'm good. If you do have questions, you know, Tom got those to us and, and we'll do everything in our power to get answers back as quickly as we possibly can. So that's helpful. And the more specific that you are with your questions, obviously, we would, you know, be able to prepare and get that information to you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Scott, I have a question on one of the capital items, the Jerome Harrison Cooling Tower and Compressor. You don't have to, just wondering what that project entails.
That's a good question, if you send it to me, I can get John Florio to give me an explanation tomorrow and I can get you that tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So anything you have specific about anything in there, let me know and, and I can get those answered tomorrow.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Yep.
Mike, I think that's a wrap.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks guys.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Tom, I think you're still on mute, Tom.
All right, thanks. So the next item's a public hearing on the budget?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, I do not have any calls or emails, correspondence. I will check with the technician in terms of posts, but at this point, I don't have any on, on my end. None.
Okay, I do have one letter that I need to read. Is that okay now?
Sure.
Okay, please be with me, Town Council members, it's rather lengthy, but I think it's an important letter. To members of the North Grandford Town Council, we are writing to you in a true bipartisan manner to request of the North Grandford Town Council a proven bond for the construction of a new police facility beginning in the 2021 fiscal year. While we are fully aware of the current economic situation that exists throughout the United States and within North Grandford, we believe that we cannot wait any longer to construct a new facility for our police officers to protect the citizens of this town 24/7. What kind of a message are we sending to our police officers if we do not stand together to provide them with the building and the tools they need to protect? to provide them with the building and the tools they need to protect this town? We have already invested many years in approximately $100,000 on studies of the current facility, as well as optional designs for a new facility that would meet the needs of the 21st Century Police Department. Because of the requirement to maintain the integrity of both the police station and the 911 dispatch center, dispatch center, which is the hub of the entire communication center for emergency services for the town, remediation to this 40-year-old facility is almost impossible. The facility is plagued by underlining, underlying structural problems that have been exacerbated in the last few months, making it an increasingly difficult place to work in daily. By not addressing the implorable conditions that currently exist in the police facility, there will inevitably be substantial emergency repair costs and disruptions to the operation of the department. Two major incidents that have occurred recently included another backup of the septic system into the locker rooms and shower, and a rainstorm on April 13th, which puddled water in the attic and stained newly-installed ceiling tiles. While investigating where the leaks were coming from, black mold and mildew were found throughout the attic and in the walls. The roof needs to be replaced, which is estimated to cost between $50,000 to $60,000. Any plans and attempts to remediate the areas affected by these two issues will be very costly and disruptive of the everyday operations of the department. Due to these two incidents, the police department plans on hiring a company that will test the amount of mold and mildew, as well as any toxicity in the heating and cooling ducts, to determine the air quality to ensure that the police department is safe for all employees working within the building. To completely correct the septic problem, it would require breaking through the concrete of the basement floor. Since the pipes with the septic system run through almost the entire basement, not only would this be a costly project, it will disrupt the 911 computer system, the locker rooms, the cells, the officer's break room, work area, the evidence room, and some offices. The removal of the black mold and mildew in the walls and ceilings and accompanying scent of mold would also cause a disruption on the main floor of the facility. How much longer are we going to waste more money and time on these Band-Aid approaches and not provide our police officers with a facility they serve? Add these issues to antiquated holding cells, tangled cords within a space for updated IT infrastructure, lack of proper showers, cramped offices, poor heating and air conditioning, no elevator, an inadequate booking room, and inefficient salad court, to name some of the other issues that exist. In addition, the wear and tear of this round-the-clock usage for over 40 years has deteriorated the situation. Why don't we do the right thing now? This is the time to act. Why do we believe that now is the time to act? Because the fact that the current police facility is beyond repair or renovation. We have completed the necessary first steps in working on the plans for a new facility, and most importantly, the instant, interest rates are now at an all-time low. Moreover, bonding is like obtaining a home equity line of credit. You draw down on what you use. As you know, there are phases involved with this type of project. The immediate cost of 2021 would involve initial steps as, such as approval of architectural drawings and bid documents before construction could begin. Right now is the right time to make this right. Sincerely, Victor Pedi Andrea, Chair, North Bramford Police Commission Taxpayer, David Palumbo, Vice Chair, North Bramford Police Commission and Taxpayer. I will send Michelle a copy of this and to Mike. Thank you.
Thanks, Murray. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, just checking right now, I don't have any, let me check with, uh, technician, any, any posts? None, nothing on my end.
We're keeping the public hearing open, correct? So that people can still comment and send in emails or whatever? In case they didn't see it live tonight, they can always watch it and wasn't that a discussion that we had earlier?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think you're right. I think there was a, I thought there was a, an agreement consensus to try and keep it open to give the public an opportunity, uh, and certainly if not being able to see it live, but certainly on a replay from Totucket.
I, I just don't want to close the public hearing tonight just because no one responded, and to let them know that it's still open and will take comments up until, I think, Thursday night at the beginning of our, our work session, because that's our last one. So we would need to hear it before we finalize budget, so.
Right.
I have not seen an agenda for tomorrow night. What time are we starting tomorrow night?
Uh, tomorrow's seven, and I can get that, I thought, uh, I thought that was already in the Dropbox, but I'll send, I can resend it.
I, I have not seen it, and I asked a couple other people. I don't know if anybody else has seen it.
Yeah, yeah, it's in there.
I, well, somehow I didn't get it.
Yeah, seven, seven o'clock.
Yeah.
The upcoming meetings, can you just review the upcoming meetings quickly? So tomorrow, Wednesday at 7:00 PM?
Right, for tomorrow and, uh, for Thursday, um.
Wednesday and Thursday are in the Dropbox, Murray.
You know, I looked, I just looked in my Dropbox, I didn't find it.
Murray, they're all, they're all in the Town Agenda folder.
Yeah.
They're in the same folder as tonight.
I, well, maybe I missed it.
I'll take a look. I, I looked earlier, I didn't see them, and then I just saw them, so.
Oh, then maybe they, maybe they were put in later on today, then.
Well, they got to pop, I think they got to pop up. I think you got to draw them up.
They're in today's, they're in today's, uh, Agenda folder.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can, we'll just resend it via email.
And what about the Zoom invitation, Mike? Is that going out as well?
Uh, not yet, I'll put that out, uh, tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in, in respect to Thursday's meeting, there was a, a conflict, obviously, with, with the Board of Education. They're going to move, uh, their meeting up to six o'clock and then, uh, try and give the, them time to, to finish. Uh, we won't, we'll keep them, the agenda posted at seven so that we can start immediately after them, rather than posting for 7:30 or changing the posting time. Because you can't start any earlier than the posting time, you can start after, but not earlier. And so what we'll do is, I'll send out the Zoom invitation, uh, tomorrow morning, and then resend the, uh, the agendas out.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
So I, I think, yeah, I think you, you probably want to, um, form, maybe formally make them, I don't know, I would suggest a motion to, uh, continue the, the public hearing or continue, or leave the, leave the hearing open, just so you have it on, on the record, I guess. Not that you need to, it's just a suggestion.
All right, I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing on the budget open until Thursday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay? Move to adjourn? Second? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. See you tomorrow night, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night, thank you all.